Call to order, the meeting of the Salem School Committee, September 16th, 2024, 7:00 PM. This meeting is taking place in person at 29 Highland Avenue. You can also join via Zoom using the link posted in the meeting agenda. We have one member participating remotely, so all votes will be by roll call vote. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Under discussion, seeing none, Member Miranda?
Yes.
Member Cornell?
Yes.
Member Hoffman?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yep.
Thank you. Member Manning?
Yes.
And myself, yes, Mayor Kerry's. Public comment. The Salem School Committee would like to hear from the public on issues that affect the school district and are within the scope of the committee's responsibilities. Spanish interpretation is available for anyone who needs it. The members of the school committee would like to remind the public that Salem Public Schools students regularly attend school committee meetings. We encourage all meeting participants to model respectful and productive public discourse for our young learners. Any public comment?
Good evening, I'm Ben Chertok, Coordinator of Music for Salem. Just wanted to give an update on our calendar. I know I usually have that for you before this meeting. It will be coming to you very, very briefly. We're just tweaking one last thing on the thing and then we'll get that out to school committee members and make sure that it's up on our district calendars so that folks can plan around events accordingly. And also wanted to publicly remind folks that next Wednesday night, the 25th, I believe, at Salt and Stall from 6:00 to 8:00, is our annual rental night for our beginners to come and learn about the program in person with music teachers and pick up a rental instrument from our vendor. So hope to see lots of folks there.
Any other public comment in the room? No one online. Seeing no further comment. The next item on our agenda is approval of the consent agenda. These are the minutes of the school committee meeting of September 3rd, the warrants of September 4th, September 11th, September 5th, and September 12th. Under discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Member Cornell?
Yes.
Member Hoffman?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yep.
Member Manning?
Yes.
Member Miranda?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Superintendent's report.
Good evening, thank you Mayor. I just have a couple of quick notes before we turn to the main presentation this evening. Just, this is our first meeting since school started. I just want to thank everybody for a great start to the school year. Our staff did an amazing job of getting ready and welcoming our students back to school. I want to thank our teachers, our custodians, our school leaders, our paraprofessionals for everything they've done to make sure that we've had a smooth return to school. It's never easy, especially as the little ones are coming for the first time. I see Betty from the ECC, that's a, but I appreciate the love that our staff shows our young people and how welcoming folks have been. This, the last two weeks, there's been open houses at all the schools and that continues this week. It's a great chance to get to know the, your child's school, as well as get to know the teacher and ask questions about the, about the school year. So, you know, we have the normal hiccups when it comes to transportation that we're trying to iron out, but it's been a lot smoother than what we've seen in the last few years. It seems to get better every single year, despite the fact that we transport, you know, more than 1,500 kids every day to and from school. I do also want to call out that Hispanic Heritage Month has now begun. As of yesterday, there was a flag raising, yesterday, the city had a flag raising and do want to acknowledge how important this month is, although we, we should be celebrating our diversity all year long. But this is the month where, I know there's some events that the Latina Leadership Coalition has in place, but we will, we will be celebrating as a school district as we always do. But I want to call out that that started yesterday. And then I also want to just remind, or let folks know that MCAS and accountability data will be released publicly on Tuesday. The embargo will be lifted and there'll be, that will be shared publicly. We'll have a statement from the district about our performance across the schools and we'll give the school committee a full presentation at the October 7th meeting. So it will be a couple of weeks after the, the public release of the data. And so we'll be able to share that and have discussions about how our schools have done. But just really excited, it feels like summer was a long time ago, but it's been great to have our students back and we're excited for what is poised to be a really good year for the Salem Public Schools. So with that, I do see in the audience that we have a lot of middle school people here and they're special people, middle school people. I'll just leave it at that. Take special people to be with 6th through 8th graders every day, a special love and passion for that age group. And we have the entire middle school, almost the entire middle school team across Salt and Stall and Collins. We're going to provide an update on our pilot program that has now evolved to the 8th grade experience in the Salem Public Schools. And I thought it was important for you to have a sense of where we were and more importantly, where we're going with the revisioning of the, or of the middle school experience and what it looks like on the ground and what we plan for it to look like for the remainder of this year. So I'm going to turn it over to the team. I do want to point out that you have a present, the presentation was sent to you. And then also there was a good question asked of me today about the demographics in the pilot last year. And so I gave you a one-page handout that makes a comparison of the middle school overall, the demographics in the middle school overall to the pilot last school year. Obviously this year, that's not a concern because it is the entire 8th grade in the Salem Public School. That's part of, no longer the pilot, but part of this new, new middle school experience. So am I turning it over to you, Chelsea? It's to Gavin, okay. So Gavin, Mr. Softik. Okay.
Stand united.
Yeah. That's right. These are awkward middle schoolers right here.
All right, so I am here with an esteemed group of people, as you heard, a great team. So I'm Gavin Softik, the principal at Collins Middle School. I'm going to introduce everybody. Seamus Murk, Collins Middle School AP, Terrell Green, Dean of Culture and Students, Beth Ann Jellison, Principal of Salt and Stall, Jessica Ebleth, AP, SALT, and Chelsea Banks, Dean of Innovation. All right, so today we're just going to give an update on the middle school from, you know, the pilot and its birth to where we are today. So I have the clicker. All right, so there are just four pillars that we're going to drive here tonight, and that's learner-driven vision, the pillars of the student experience, our, our leading indicators, and learning and next steps as we look into this school year and the future at both Collins Middle School and Salt and Stall. All right, so I'm going to hand it over to Chelsea.
It wouldn't be me coming to school committee if I didn't start with COVID. So this all started as we came out of COVID and looked at the realities our students were returning to school with in the 22, 23 school year. And so there was a call to action that as hard as our teachers were working, that they were experiencing burnout with trying to work towards engaging students and helping them to feel a sense of purpose in school. And so they, partnership formed between Salem Public Schools and WPS to launch this idea of inclusive design. And so we launched a pilot, which was a small program inside the middle schools to try to test and figure out what is it that kids need? How did their voice shape, do their voices shape this vision? And a task force, we engaged over 500 community members that first year in what is the vision for middle school and how do we create opportunities for connection, empowerment, and growth for our adolescent learners? And that together has put together this plan for growth. And so the collaboration of all the people standing here and the members of our whole district has really led to this ability to go from a small pilot to a grade-wide experience for all of our 8th graders. But thinking about how as a system, we really create the conditions for and enable innovation to think about what works and how to scale what works to more students and to be thoughtful about change management in the middle schools.
So, we came up with a vision for the middle school learner, which is powered by relationships, trust, and a sense of belonging. I've developed my identity, skills, and mindsets that empower me to navigate my learning and chart my course and engage with my community to reach my academic and life potential.
And so this isn't just words that we speak. We, as members of the school leaders in the school, we actually try to communicate these words with the students and really get them using that. So if you see in this slide of our goals, that language is now student-facing. This slide is a student-facing slide. So when we are talking to them, we are using this language and wanting them to also develop that language to really love being in school, to also feel empowered to do hard things and get support to do them, to, and also for their voice because that matters and how that helps to shape their learning. And then on that third one, growing, also like them understanding, you know, to help every student to the best of their version of themselves as a prepared, as they prepare for high school as possible as we can.
All right, so bringing this vision to life, you know, it's a continuous process, you know, and all stakeholders are involved, student, family, and educators as well. So to shape this design and this iteration, we actually use data, human-driven data, the Transcend Leap Survey to get information around the experience that educators are having, students are having, and families. And you'll see in later slides about some of that data. And then we want to apply this data and kind of look at the district strategic plan and think about the child experience and how to invest in our stakeholders, community, and in the school district in a continuous learning loop process. So the visual to your left and how we build and measure is called a learning loop, so that's the language that we use. And then throughout this process, we're consistently, you know, looking at feedback and how to improve, and that's using the voice of students, family, and educators. So, sorry. This summer has been exciting as we, you know, go into year three of this process. So this summer at Collins Middle School and Salt and Stall, we had two weeks where educators came in to do the work. And this was a lot, empowered teams to get together, start thinking about some of the components that Chelsea will talk about a little bit later of what the 8th grade experience, what we're calling it now, looks like. And this also gets a lot of buy-in from teachers that leads to that buy-in from students. So when teachers are experiencing what they're going to deliver to students, that's where the magic happens throughout the school year. Then we also looked at some new strategies for student support. We implemented the Connect for Success Program at Collins Middle School to target students who may be high need in sub areas, attendance, social, emotional, and academic. And then the use of the student success advisors is something new this year as we've redefined what a behavior specialist looks like across the district. So that's happening in all schools, in Salem Public Schools. And then, you know, last year and the year before, you know, we're looking at 40 students to 85 students, so this year with over 200 students. So the work we did last year to kind of figure out what worked from the pilot, we called it the taste elements. So a lot of the things that we're implementing this year in 8th grade are things that we tried out with our pockets of students last year. So it's really exciting to see what's going to happen to come. So just a little background about how the pilot expanded to where we are today. So as I mentioned, in spring 22, 22, the mayor and Dr. Wright kind of thought about, you know, how can we re-engage middle schoolers after the pandemic? You know, throughout, you know, the Commonwealth and the nation, middle school students had trouble re-engaging and there's, so the call to action. So teams were implemented, a reimagined team, as well as a redesigned team to think about the middle school experience. And that's kind of where I kind of walked into it. So some of the work happened before I even came into Collins Middle School. So year one, in the fall of 2022, there were about 44 students that were part of a lottery process, as you may all know, that could come from Collins or Salt and Stall. And that was the first time that middle schools kind of took shape under, you know, the guidance of Chelsea at Collins Middle School, and they were housed in two classrooms. And so the following year, last year, we expanded it to 7th and 8th grade, still a lottery process, but doubling the amount of students to about 84, 85. And this year, we really expand to obviously the 8th grade experience. So thinking about, again, like I talked about, that taste of the pilot last year and how it becomes now what we embody as a student experience this year. All right, so we're going to talk about now the pillars of the student experience. So part of the middle school experience, look at these five pillars, if you will. So the foundation, as we've mentioned, is the student voice in the learner profile. So getting an understanding of the students' understanding of who they are as people, what they are interested in, and the impact that makes on not only their school, their family, but their community. We do this through the four pillars of studio learning, personalized learning, connection and community, and community-based learning experience. So getting outside of the class from walls as well. All right, so talk a little bit deeper, I'm going to hand it off to Chelsea.
Thank you. So what we're talking about is really trying to move from some of the pieces that we've been testing and learning about studio and learning immersions we came to talk to you about 18 months ago in the first few months of what we were learning and what students were kind of showing up, showing us that they needed, to the more holistic vision of what we're trying to accomplish with middle school. And so there's three things that we're really trying to talk about. The first is around where learning happens, and so trying to help students not just think about this building as their school, but think about their community as their school and beyond, and how do they take the things that they're learning inside classrooms and apply it to their worlds to make meaning and make it relevant? Often our students articulate that they're kind of just on this never-ending wait for high school, that that they understand the purpose of, but trying to bring purpose to middle school about understanding their world and their community. So it's collaborations, it's seeing cutting-edge robotics at UMass Lowell's nerve center, it's going to the State House and visiting Representative Cruz. And as a result, students are feeling more integrated into their community. They're seeing the opportunities to connect with each other and their community, and their learning, and that brings relevance. And that's one of the lowest on the Transcend surveys across the board in middle schools, like why am I learning this? What does this have to do with my life? And so we're really trying to go after that learning, that relevant learning by thinking about where learning happens. The second principle is around how learning happens. So we're trying to start with the high-quality curriculum that Salem Public Schools uses in its schools and then think about how to bridge that and make meaning of it. One of the pieces that students have said is that between the where and the how, that we've kind of broken the monotony of middle school and thinking about that factory model of kids kind of just like transitioning between sets of classes. How do we tie that together and think about how the learning happens? And that does happen in these connected projects, so interdisciplinary, hands-on learning through design studio, which is a way of thinking about projects, and in response to local and real-world challenges. So they were thinking about studying animals at the aquarium and their movement to build robots that would clean the ocean. So how could they think about their local ecosystems right here in Salem? And to then help them anchor that personalized learning is also thinking about where am I now and where do I want to go and how do I get there? So how do I set goals and monitor my progress and growth towards those goals? And these projects help students learn how to collaborate. They are adolescents. They are in it, figuring out who they are and how to work together. And so how do they work with their peers, especially in the face of challenges? Those studio projects are designed as an open challenge. So there isn't a right answer, but how do we work together to find the answer, to develop their curiosity and creativity, and then again, to set goals and pursue topics that interest them? And the last piece that we're working on is with whom learning happens. So one of the magic pieces we found is that when you take 14-year-olds and you have them work with not only other 14-year-olds, they're amazing. And so they have been amazing. In the first year, we did a partnership with Carlton, which is part of how Beth Ann and I started all of this together, of mentoring 3rd graders. And just beautiful humans came out of raising their hands to be part of the group that got to work with Beth Ann's substantially separate program. And so who got to be the ones to be the mentors for those students and to work with 3rd graders and teach them. We're also teaching middle schoolers how we learn by helping them design math games for how 3rd graders are learning multiplication. The second is working closely with the Salem State University School of Education and their Center for Civic Engagement. And so we've been working on a model from University of Pennsylvania's possibility mentoring, which is really just thinking about the possibilities and setting goals and then thinking about like how you learn how to make a map towards your goals. And so we had education students from the Education Students of Color Cohort, the new program, ESOC at SSU, were mentoring groups of four to five 7th graders last year. And we're working on how to expand that to serve all students in rotations. We're figuring out scale this year. And the last is around working with local professionals and seeing people in their jobs. We're trying to go deeper on that this year in the career options, and so students can see, based on what I'm interested, what does that mean I could become? And how do I start to think about those options and possibilities down the road? And so those near peers really unlock a lot of the brilliance of middle schoolers and help them to begin to build a network and imagine the future possibilities. All of this is only possible because of the amazing partners that we've been able to connect with during our time here. So I mentioned already Salem State. We've worked and designed projects together with Ipsa River Watershed Association and the PBD Essex Museum. PBD Essex actually came here and presented on how they designed exhibits, and then our students transformed their showcase into an actual like museum exhibit and were thoughtful about the layout and how they were going to invite people in and have people come and make. They insisted that the superintendent and the mayor come and carve cardboard and practice the actual skills that they were taught. We have those photos. And so we have been able to work with Project Adventure and other players to help bring this, these ideas to life and really co-design with us as part of the process, which is exciting to think about a community taking responsibility for its students and its schools. I think I'm giving it back to Gavin.
All right, so let's talk a little bit about the leading indicators. So the first one is improved attendance. So, you know, students don't want to miss school. And so we looked at this and a few different data points. Here you can see just how the chronic absentee rate dropped from 23 to 24, to 9.6 in the pilot program last year, which was the 7th and 8th grade students. And also dropped across the school to 15.8% or 16%. And so some of that is obviously the work being done in the pilot, that also the taste of the pilot that all students experienced last year. So we got to see some good data right off the bat and sharing those experiences. And then the pilot cohort from year one to year two, there was actually a 50% decrease in chronic absentee rate. So really huge decrease, and it shows the experience and the student's voice being heard. And so if we were to compare this to other urban school districts, most middle schools are around 20 to 25% chronic absentee rate. Collins Middle School itself, two years ago was 23.4, this year dropped to 15.8, and then in the pilot last year, down to 9.6. So a really tremendous trend in students wanting to be here, not only just because of compliance, because they're getting something out of that and they feel valued at school.
We're going to go back and forth now.
Go back and forth.
Okay.
I'll play with you.
Just hot off the presses, the data team just pulled as well that the 80% of students who continued on to Salem High School have an under 10% chronic absenteeism rate compared to about 18% of the high schools. So it's nice to see that freshly analyzed data. Thank you, Mark and team. The second one here is that Transcend survey. So there are categories or leaps of from X to Y of how they think about school, from isolated to connected and community. The two overall questions that they ask are overall, most of the time I love school, just on the left, and overall, most of the time I'm learning a lot. And so you can see an impact on both years of cohorts from the beginning of year to end of year, which is pretty similar, about a doubling of the number of middle schoolers who are willing to admit that they love school. We know that the national average for that is in the 30s, and it's a high bar for 14-year-olds to tell you they love school. But on the right-hand side, part of what we're also really excited about is you can see school-wide growth, that that baseline went from 44 to 52% last year. So there's work going on in the school before we got them. There's more learning happening at Collins and at the middle schools, but that top number, that 74%, you know, we want that to be 100, but we're getting to that three in four kids who are saying overall, most of the time I'm learning a lot.
Yeah, and then student achievement, you know, similar results. So year one in the pilot outformed in ELA and science the rest of Collins Middle School. And then here, obviously with the embargoed, embargoed MCAS scores, we're just looking at the STARGrowth, which is the interim assessment that we have. And you can see our SGP, student growth percentiles, although great growth actually compared to the year before, significantly higher in, in the 7th and 8th grade pilot program. But I'd just like to call out, as you can see, 60 to 65, so in ELA in both pilot and non-pilot, that's outstanding growth, as well as in the, sorry, the math as well. So 66 and 57, really high, 39%. So that, that would be lower in the rest of the middle school. However, from the year before is higher, so not where we want it to be, but overall, great growth, but significantly higher in the pilot program. And then we talked about the student, teacher, and parent voice. So here we're talking, looking at teacher satisfaction. So retention, 100% of teachers that participated in the pilot last year said that they, you know, they wanted to come back and then they felt valued, and they're more likely to join the team at Collins Middle School. And same with the family satisfaction. So the pilot expectation, 90% of families felt like they were satisfied with the valued education that they received. And so we saw great growth also in overall retention at Collins Middle School. The previous year, we had about 50% turnover, and we saw a lot of teachers coming back, which is exciting because now we can now build off of that going into year two. And, you know, and as we expand to Salt and Stall as well, we know that their retention rate was much higher too. And so we're excited to see what they can also provide in their school.
I'll just add on to that as we switch into the next slide, is some of the really fascinating moments that we have are when people come to learn about us and then actually hearing our teachers talk to others. And so it wasn't the, like, we designed the program for students, but a very close following effect has been the impact of empowering educators to be part of designing school and figuring out the solutions and being part of those learning loops and looking at data and being invited into this like culture of continuous improvement, which I hope is what you're hearing about the whole middle school experience, that we're really working on what's working, what's not, and how do we just keep growing and not necessarily knowing the answer, but knowing that we're on the road to making it better? And so we have had some press that covered that, including some things that we have published and gotten attention for around chronic absenteeism and engaging in school. Essex County Learning Collaborative, ECLC, also ran a reimagining middle school cohort that we got to kind of anchor in that experience and work with middle schools from around the North Shore. PBD's middle school is actually launching a 6th grade partnership with WPS, the people who helped us design, and thinking about lighter touch across, they have over 400 just 6th graders. So thinking about how that looks at a much bigger scale, and that we've been able to invite in and work with schools from around the region to come learn more. And then you can, Seamus and Beth Ann.
Oh, it's on, thank you. So over the summer, as Gavin said earlier, educators from both Salt and Stall and Collins Middle School came together for a period of two weeks facilitated by Chelsea. It was such a valuable experience to all get on the same page and set a vision and, and talk about the culture that we are offering to students, where they have a voice in their education, hands-on learning, and actually have some, you know, shared experiences together. Putting everybody on the same page at both middle schools felt really powerful. And I've already seen the difference this year from students and staff. So week one, they took kids out on a, students out on a learning immersion, and then week two, they were engaged in studio. And I'm hearing things from, you know, from middle school kids, like, I really like school this year and I want to do that again. And the positive feedback from teachers just really engaged, and it just seems that's already impacted the culture. So putting us on the same page and being able to set that vision and get those experience was really powerful.
Yeah, just to add on to that, so we're asking our teachers to really partner with us here in reimagining what middle school looks like. And so we know that that is really hard work, that's, that's really challenging work. And so it's incumbent on us to make sure that our teachers are supported so that they can grow as educators and really kind of change the game for our students. Just very quickly, I'll share an anecdote. One of our teachers, a 31-year veteran of Collins Middle School, said to Chelsea and I, "I have never felt so prepared for the first day of school," after spending that two weeks with us. And that same teacher was jumping into studios and very excited to join with the students and engaging in some hands-on work. That is the legendary Brad Maloon, by the way.
And just the last thing I wanted to say is our 8th grade teachers have already started talking to our 4th grade teachers, and we've already got some learning immersions in studios going to happen between the two grades, just because we're right there in the building and it makes sense to have them experience that and become the mentors for our younger kids.
So just about like what we've learned in the next step. So some of the early lessons, sorry, you know, is about aligned leadership. So, you know, two schools partnerships, it was just really important that we all shared that same vision and the outcomes, and also getting the support from the district as well. So that top-down leadership was really crucial to the success that we've encountered so far. Educated development, you know, professional development, that's a huge investment and not only financially, but time. And so we talked about the time over the summer, but also after-school investment to be able to prepare for these learning immersions and these experiences that are, you know, not typical in public schools. Student voice, that's the key, that's the name of the game here. This is where we're here for the students, and their voice and their leadership is what drives our next steps. And that will continue to be a process as we talked about as we iterate our learning loop. Partnerships, WPS has been a huge partner for us as well. Partnerships, WPS has been a huge partner for us as well as all the other community members. And when you have partners that are as invested in your students as they are, that actually, and they care about your students, that's the only way partnerships work in the community. So, we're very fortunate to have WPS and other partnerships that people are invested in our students, they care about them, they want them to succeed long after high school, middle school into the high school. And then, the resources, again, WPS has been great about securing that, as well as the district about supporting us in some innovation thinking. So, those are some of the early lessons that we've learned and that will need to drive our continuous improvement. And then, finally, so where do we go next? You know, independent learners. So, you know, part of the strategic plan in Salem Public Schools is about creating independent learners and so that they will be successful long after they leave Collins Middle School, Salem High School, and when they enter the work field or post-secondary education, they're gonna be prepared. So, it's on us to think deeper and critical about what we're providing for our students. We could continue to build deeper partnerships. There are so many in the Salem and the North Shore that we have yet to tap into. So, we look forward to, as we expand, not only the amount of students in the shared experience, but, you know, all of Salem. We know there's some great partners out there, so we look forward to connecting with them. Student pathways, and so, we've kind of reimagined what our, you know, specialist is or has been, you know, from PE Health to STEM, Project Lead the Way. These are all classes that students can build skills and build interest in. So, we're trying to figure out what students are interested in and guide them on these pathways. This also includes world language and some portfolio work, as well as a culminating experience at the annual, they'll, you know, present it in front of a panel in eighth grade this year. So, building what students want and what they need to be successful. And then, the future planning, you know, that's a partnership with SPS and WPS and the depth of the work. So, like I said, it starts at the beginning with a shared vision from the community, the district, to the school level. So, we're excited to be here in front of all of you and where we're headed in the future. I think that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Members of the committee have questions? Member Miranda?
Thanks so much. This was great and so inspiring and motivating, so thank you guys for the encouragement. And can you just tell me, what does WPS stand for?
It stands for the Winthrop Park School. So, the origin of that organization in 2018 was gonna be a no-tuition private school. They have evolved in many versions and actually might be getting a rebranding coming, but they have just gone to the WPS Institute because that's what their 501(c)(3) is for them. No problem.
Mayor Cruz?
I just want to thank both of the teams for the presentation. I certainly found it to be insightful. I, like other members of the committee, have had opportunities to both visit the program, welcome students, and got to participate in the most recent showcase where members of the community were able to see the pilot in the studios, which I thought was really fantastic and to be led by students and educators about what their experience was. I want to put the same stake in the ground to the district that I put on that culminating day back in the spring, which is, I think that this pilot is fantastic and the data affirms that. I love that it's moving to all seventh and eighth grade students. I think the one piece is that we have middle school redesign and high school redesign happening at the same exact time. And what I heard from our educators that were in the middle school pilot was really powerful and profound. And as our high school is going through redesign, they're welcoming students that are coming from this pilot. And I think that from both the student and the educator perspective, we just have to continue to build in those types of innovative practices that, again, that student-led piece on, you know, how lessons are being planned, that, you know, that was something that I heard loud and clear from the students, that really made them engaged in the pilot and the fact that they were able to really help shape their learning. But then, on the piece of the educators, you know, I just hope that from a professional development standpoint, that we are bringing some of these middle school educators to high school teachers as well to kind of work together and talk about what was learned in the pilot, because I just remember hearing two different teachers, but, you know, one that was my seventh-grade teacher and has been here for a very long time and a newer educator in the district, talk about how empowered they felt. And as we think about the programmatic design at the high school, you know, I just wouldn't want those lessons learned from those educators to be siloed to the middle school level, especially, you know, just today I visited the high school and got to see one of our pilot students, who's now a ninth grader, which is awesome, but I want to make sure that she's having that same voice and choice in her education and that her educators are feeling empowered. So, I just put that stake in the ground. That's more of a you thing, Superintendent, I think. But, you know, that's my, that's my feedback here, is that I just want to make sure at the high school levels, across the three of them, that we're still thinking about, you know, what can be learned from this pilot that we can really implement, especially in those first two transition years that we know are the most difficult for our students.
Can I just respond to that, Mayor? I, I think you're right, Mr. Cruz, but I wouldn't just say high school teachers, I think it's about teachers all over the system having, you know, more ownership over the work that they do. We, you know, we want to cultivate innovation, we want to cultivate the ideas that, you know, our staff brings. And I think that's, that makes it, when we talk about why people want to stay in an organization and why they want to stay in a district, it's in the, they want to be part of an organization where their voice is, you know, heard and that, you know, that we're doing innovative things that makes the, you know, and they want to see the efficacy for kids. And I think when I hear the teachers talk about their experience, there's a sense of pride that what they're doing is working for kids. I mean, middle school's middle school, but, and it's challenging work, but when they see that kids want to be in school and are excited about school, it makes it a lot easier to want to come to work every day. And I think that's something that we've got to continue to think about as we think about the profession as a whole that's bleeding people. You know, how do we make this a more appealing profession? It's experiences like this, and we heard that loud and clear from the teachers that were part of the pilot last year. And so, I would say, yeah, not just for the high school, I think it's a systemic thing that we've got to continue to look at.
Agreed, Superintendent. And I, I think it's my focus on it being for high school, and I certainly would want that flexibility and spirit of innovation to exist at all levels, is that they're receiving our students that are coming from this pilot at the high schools. And the scale of the number of students that are gonna be in the pilot in this particular year, I think really speaks to the need for at the high school to really start implementing some, some of those lessons learned in the PD, because, I mean, the number of students that are coming in over the next two years is gonna be so significant.
Yep.
Member Campbell has a question. I'm voting.
Hi, everyone. Not so much a question, it's a comment. First, obviously, I echo everything that my fellow members have said regarding the excitement around the pilot. I love seeing the leveraging of teacher expertise and, you know, the development of student agency voice and choice, it's just, it's so important and I could go on and on. And it's just very exciting and it's so exciting to see the data supporting the work. Similarly, to member Cruz, I would just flag that at the elementary level, there's dual-language middle school planning underway and I think there's such a natural fit. I heard a reference to world language, which is also a great fit for this, and I'm so excited to hear that and just, I'm sure you guys have probably had internal conversations, but would love to see how dual-language can be connected within it so that, you know, just one of the biggest things with secondary programming for dual-language is that as young people start to have to make choices between preserving, you know, the language development that they've done and, you know, interesting and innovative classes in programming, they will often choose the interesting and innovative programming. And it would be great to find a way to make sure they don't have to make those types of choices. But thank you, guys, this was really wonderful.
Well said. Thank you. Mayor Cornell?
I have a question for all of you, but I also wanted to mention our building committee meetings had brought this up. So, we have this advisory group that kind of helps facilitate. And the last time we had a meeting, they were kind of giving us all this interesting, inspiring stuff, you know, that sort of just innovative ways of approaching education. And I think they were kind of gauging our teachers and district's willingness, you know, like how, you know, how into it are we as a district, you know, to do innovative things? And I was so excited to be able to go, "Yes, actually, we're doing, we're doing a whole bunch of stuff," which is why I reached out to Chelsea so that we could give them some information about the pilot program. But, so that's a conversation we're having, is that how do you not just design an innovative space, but how do you think about that space in relationship to the, you know, to innovative teaching and learning? So, I've been really happy about how that conversation has gone, because it's not just about rooms, chairs, desks, space. It's about what innovative things can happen in this space and how do you design a space so that teachers can do their thing, you know, and have these opportunities? So, it's been a really great process in that, in that regard. And now, I have a question. So, all of this, now that you have more teachers participating, and it's really wonderful to hear how excited they are about it, because I'm sure, like, as a teacher, I didn't, I didn't like change when people asked me to do things. So, now that they're doing it and they're into it, like, what are they telling you they could use to be even more successful?
It's day nine, so I think that we're still getting into it and figuring things out. I think for what they can use, I do think that there are, you know, trade-offs in budget cycles of how things work and things that are simple from, like, refreshed Chrome Card, like the techno, all the pieces working of the supports for making things happen. I think that there's some tools interest of like, how do we bring these things to life? We recycle an incredible amount of cardboard. We've also just become the place where everybody brings their boxes to be broken down. And so, we do a lot with like lo-fi and low-tech, but I think there are tools out there that are available that can bring things to life. I do think that the hesitation is a little bit about change management. And so, I think that, like, how much new and different, I think, so as they get into the year, at the end of last year, our teachers who were in it, I think were certainly by January, thinking about, "Oh, next year, this is, these are all the things that I want to do." So, I'm not hearing a ton of like, "What's next?" I think there's still a lot of digestion.
I'm sorry, I meant, I meant those folks. When you expanded it from last year to this year, like, they must have ideas about ways that, so I'm basically thinking about dollars and cents from our perspective, like, what...
I mean, a big piece that they're grateful for is partnership this year, because they have people to collaborate with. So, last year, they were teaching two grade levels on a team of one. And so, this year, they have a, like, a partner and teaching teams, we're focusing a lot on co-teaching and the co-teaching model. And so, I think that that, like, adult support within the classroom has gone a long way to start this year, which is part of why nine days in, they're feeling good about it. I think the teachers are very thoughtful about scale and flexibility. So, part of being small was the ability to really, at any given moment, we could change our schedule or flip things or, and as soon as you start to impact more humans, that becomes harder. And so, I think the trick here is how do you, like, maintain that flexibility, maintain that ability to have voice and change and not throw off the other people that you're partnering with or that piece. And so, I think that tension's gonna come to life, but I think that what they're excited about is interdisciplinary. They're excited to be working together and figuring out the connections now that they've been through it once. What does this look like? How do we bring it deeper and go deeper? So, I know Haunted Happenings has been a big, our first-year students said, "We want to go to Haunted Happenings," and we said, "Okay, what are you gonna do?" And they're gonna study the impact of it on Salem and whether it's helpful. And so, this year, they're really getting into some city data. Hi, Mayor. And looking at like, but also learning about how most of the revenue doesn't actually come back directly to Salem and what does that look like and how do different parts of the government work. And so, I think that that's what they're most excited about, is having been through it, sort of like missed opportunities in years one and two, just because we were trying to figure it all out. And now that there's more people and more collaboration, that they're excited to go deeper. And then, that becomes a question of time. So, like, how do you, if, how do you take the time to go deep on that project and still get them ready for everything they need to do for, to get ready for high school? Sorry for the long winded.
This is something that we've been thinking about for the high school building project, which is because if we're talking about interdisciplinarity and teachers being able to talk to each other and come up with cool ideas, like, that teachers need space to be able, not just time, like, teachers always need more time, but like, physical space that teachers can interact with each other without having kids around, without other stuff to do, where people can brainstorm and have those conversations. And so, even though we have, we obviously will be engaging with the high school teachers about this, I think that the input from the middle school pilot and, you know, reimagining teachers is, would be really great input for us to get, like, this, because they're living in it, you know, like, what kind of, what would that space look like? How much time would they need? What would they, would they want to have stuff in it? Would they just want coffee? I think that feedback from, if you could bring that to them, to bring back to the building committee, would be super valuable.
More whiteboards. Whiteboards are good.
Any other questions? Oh, Member Manning?
Yeah, well, first of all, I just want to tell Veronica that she wasn't the only one that didn't know WPS, which I probably should have, but as they were talking, I was scribbling a note to Kate saying, "What is WPS?" And she's writing back to me, reminding me what it was, so...
I Googled it and the website just says WPS.
But, you know, I, I appreciate the presentation. I, I think I heard some, I guess some familia, you know, from dredging up, you know, the past, some familia, but very much updated approaches and goals and ways to interact with students and with each other and with, with staff and with parents. And I, and I appreciate that. I guess also some very much updated funding, but I'm glad that's happening. I'm hoping, and I think, couldn't quite catch everything Amanda Campbell was saying, but I think the issue of the world language, you know, really, I think we're doing a disservice to students if we're not sending them on the way to high school with, you know, the best we can offer for world language, so, and I just trust that you're looking into that. I'm curious that, I think it's, it's not really a secret, I wasn't really crazy that the pilot had a year and then became another year, that I felt was, there was an interaction to me, you know, when I said this to different people, when you, when we would have a pilot, then there has to be some interaction to the others who aren't in the pilot, who stayed in the norm, to learn from that and see which, what's gonna make sense and et cetera. And then, it felt to me like the year ended without that still happening a whole lot, as much as I would have liked. But, what you described taking place over the summer has, you know, has put that to bed for me, you know, and, and I'm thrilled that the, that the whole piece and the whole approach and all is being offered to the whole eighth grade, or not just offered, but is the model for the eighth grade. I, I really felt badly that we were doing all these things that I thought were great things to do and always thought were great things to do to just a few kids or with just a few. So, the fact that it's across the eighth grade, both schools, you know, to me is, is good and all the stuff that went on in the summer. So, I do want to congratulate you on all the hard work that obviously has gone into this, to take it from a pilot to, you know, the entire grade. I guess my only one just question would be, is it time to stop referring to it as a pilot? I mean, it's, it's, it's a grade-level approach now. And I, I was flipping through here as you were talking, I don't see the word, but I heard it everywhere here from all of us tonight. So, maybe, you know, the, the last piece is to just ditch the name or ditch the term and it's just the way we're, you know, helping our eighth-grade students to learn, you know?
I was given firm instructions that the word was put to bed over the summer. But when we look at the data...
Yeah, you have to reference the pilot data.
And in the school, that's how we refer to it as well, is the eighth grade, you know, as a sixth, sixth-grade experience, a seventh-grade experience, right?
And the eighth-grade experience.
Like you talked about, how do we take what we've learned and, you know, embed it to the rest of the grade levels so that everyone's experiencing that is, you know, what we're doing now. We did a little bit last year, we helped the taste, but now it's gonna be more expansive. So, we're excited about that as well.
We're also open to branding support.
You should ask the students. So, so there is no seventh-grade program this year for it, correct?
Correct.
They're, they're doing a studio tomorrow. So, like, the entire sixth and seventh grade is doing a studio. So, they're, we're taking the pieces and especially on those, like, half-day Wednesday or different pieces. I think at Salt and Stall, there's actually a little bit more in seventh grade, just because of the way that those grades work together, monthly experiences. We're looking at a couple, you know, a few learning immersions a trimester, a few studios a trimester, using those times. It's just hard to insert things into the flow for other people without being disruptive. And so, where are the moments that we can capture that? And so, tomorrow, the entire sixth and seventh grader are doing a studio that the eighth grade did on the second, the second day of school.
I don't know if you want to do this, but none of that was at the mic and so, the folks wouldn't have heard that. I don't know, maybe a 25-word capsule of what you said, just for folks.
We're utilizing the time and the schedule. We're utilizing the time and the schedule, like, early releases, to make sure that other grades are getting experiences. It's just not to the level of depth yet. But we also have had professional development time with the whole school doing this work. And so we are integrating and learning. I think it's happening a little bit behind the scenes before we're going forward with it. So last year, the whole school did a studio. They went on learning immersions, and we're trying to make that more regular and incorporate it in. And so tomorrow, the whole sixth and seventh grader are doing a version of the studio that the eighth grade and the staff did during PD. Staff did it during PD, they experienced it. Now they'll lead it for the whole school tomorrow.
Thank you.
Just so you know, oh, sorry, Wednesday for them. But we are doing a little bit more than them. So our seventh grade went on an immersion already, a learning immersion. And they are actually going on two more in the next three weeks. And so when it's, you know, when we can afford it, we are going. So on walking ones, they'll definitely go. And then they do participate in the studios as well.
I have one more question. Can somebody in this line, for me and folks out there who went on field trips for their life, tell us what's the difference in a field trip and a learning immersion? Just to get it on the record.
So when we were at the State House with Manny Cruz in the first year, we took out our worksheets in the beautiful Senate Hall Chamber. And we heard this groan from children. And so it's a messaging to kids that we are taking class on the road. So when they think field trip, they want to go to Six Flags or to, like, amusement parks. And so we've tried to message from day one and year two and year three that this is class. We are going as part of class. We don't leave students home. This is not something that you get as a reward. This is, you are taking your learning on the road into your community. And so our kids are trained now because of that experience, like, that and many others, where the work would come out and you would see them be like, oh, no, we're not going... That's not, we're in class. And so the students who have had branding opportunities but got attached to that word pilot, so they're not included in the answers. But they will say, like, the stickers that they designed say, "It's not a field trip. It's a learning immersion." So that that's like the message for kids because, as we learned, this has been a learning process, things that we didn't do as well in year one because we didn't actually know the details of how all of it was going to come together. We didn't introduce studio until November of year one because we had students showing up saying, "Just tell me the right answer." And that struggle of learning was, like, very painful. And so we had to find a way around it to invite them into the struggle of learning in a fun and empowering way. So we brought studio in November. The field trip to learning immersion transition happened at the start of year two to help students know from the start, when they leave the building, we're going out to learn. That we, they actually ask us then for field trips and try to design things. And they'll tell us why they should go to an escape room to practice teamwork and collaboration and problem solving. And so they get it, but by using that specific language, they understand that we're taking class on the road. And so changing it helped them in their understanding.
Okay. Because if I could just, I think that at one point, the trips were just what you're saying. They weren't, they were curriculum-based. They had to be for everybody, you know, back in the day. And then I got away from that. But I totally am happy to hear that your issue of everybody goes because it's a class. It's, you know, if you, you know, were a bad boy at recess, doesn't mean you don't go on, you know, there are other ways to deal with that. You know, I mean, people had, you know, would need to prove, you know, there's the, what do they call it, you know, present imminent danger or something to take somebody on a trip before they'd stay home. Yeah, you know, everybody should go. So that's, I'm glad you added that because that's a very good piece for me to hear too about it. Thank you.
Thanks. The members?
I'm not a member, but I just want to just call out, we're very lucky to have this leadership team at the middle school. These folks have taken on a difficult assignment. I want to call out Principal Jellison and Principal Softick. They came into difficult situations. And what I appreciate is they've embraced this idea that things had to be better and different for, than what they had been, you know, right after the pandemic for kids. And I do really mean it. They've been the right match for the schools in the moment we needed them. And they brought some good team members with them to form what I think are very strong middle school teams. And I'm just excited to see, we've already seen progress. And we'll see that in the next couple of weeks as, you know, data comes out. But there's, but this work takes people that are willing to think, be outside of, like, the way we've always done, or more recently have done, work. So I just want to call that out because they deserve a lot of credit for their leadership. So thank you to all of you.
And even though they're, even though they're high-maintenance people to deal with on a daily basis, no, but they, and, yeah, these two are probably the two most competitive people that I've seen around leading schools. They hate to lose. And so I'll just leave it at that. I have to, I'm the one that has to deal with that.
Before you sit down, I actually have two quick questions about the program. So how was the decision made to go with the eighth-grade year for the full grade as opposed to seventh grade?
Part of it was data-driven, that we were seeing the strongest outcomes with our eighth graders. And so it made sense to go deeper. It's also the year we had two years of experience with and not one. There's also something incredibly special about seventh graders in that you have to kind of design for a caterpillar-to-butterfly moment that happens over the course of seventh grade. Some in sixth, some in eighth, but like mostly in seventh grade. And so some of the variability of what we did as part of this experience and what we're learning and thinking about how to thoughtfully scale was actually harder for some of our seventh graders who needed a little bit more stability and so more consistency. So if some of our best pieces were, they were going to have mentorship consistently on the same, on Mondays at SSU with the same people, that worked better than some of the changes. The eighth graders were more ready for some of, they were more excited by and motivated by that, like, variability of that experience and also making those choices. So they're getting ready for ninth grade. So it also didn't, it felt a little weird to scale at seventh. And then, as Mr. Cruz said, putting, then what is eighth grade? And so eighth grade, getting ready for those decisions at ninth grade, we have gotten positive feedback that the transition to the high school, they knew how to choose their classes and how to find their people and how to access resources in a way that was helpful. And so thinking about that full eighth-grade experience and as we've discussed, teeing up that transition and really getting them ready for that ninth-grade year, which is critical to success. It's why Seamus came down from the high school to be here, to help kids before they hit that moment because of how important that experience and that transition is. And so the eighth grade both had stronger data and made sense for that transition. And they're also just no longer seventh graders.
Yeah. Well, I just want to say, like, on behalf of a family that has been part of the program, like, firsthand seeing how powerful and effective it is and just really grateful for all the work that you're all doing in it. Are there other districts who are looking to, who are doing this kind of model? And I know Salem has been, you mentioned it, you know, we've had other districts coming here to learn from our experiences. We're sharing that practices. But are there other districts that are implementing it this extensively?
Not at the depth, and some of that is the resource step, the investment in Salem to help design some of these pieces. But the sixth grade at PBD is doing elements of this across their 470 sixth graders. So that's pretty exciting. And definitely came, they were here and brought their whole team into the site visit and then worked with WPS to design what would work for them. And so there is something about this that is, in that human-centered design, going to inherently need to be community-based and based on what the needs of that population are. But the tools and the strategies, we are hoping are transferable. And we've had interest, I think the superintendent can speak a little bit more to that, from broader audiences.
Yeah, we've got a lot of inquiries, particularly around when they see the chronic absentee data. People can't believe it. And it really is a truly remarkable data point when you look at our middle school versus even suburban middle schools to see what the data looks like for kids coming to school. And so once people saw the article in the Globe and they've seen some of our data, they've, there's been inquiries from other districts to say, "What are you doing at the middle school level that makes kids want to come to school?" So, what were you saying?
Mr. Moriarty.
Oh, yeah, I mean, and there's a board member from the Department of Ed who's really wanted to study the fact that, like, yeah, to be below 10% in chronic absenteeism is, I mean, next to extraordinary. And it makes it, I mean, the work is, the bar is high. But the fact that kids want to be in school, that's the most important leading indicator, is the engagement. And then we hope to see the outcomes will follow. But first, we want, the kids need to be in school. They need to be excited about coming to school. So I, yeah, I think they're, I think, I think a lot of districts are struggling with the middle school grades. And while, I, there should be no parade. This is not a celebration that we've arrived. I do think we're on a path. And as we, you know, to Mary's point, like, we always said that this wasn't going to be a, this wasn't going to be a pilot. This wasn't going to be about everybody. And, you know, now the challenge is, like, how do we, just, I think we got to, with fiscal constraints, like, how do we do this even, you know, across sixth and seventh grade? It's going to, I mean, that's a challenge that we're going to have to wrap our arms around because it does require resources. It does require, you know, we, there's been a commitment from Salem, but there's also been a commitment from WPS that we're going to have to, you know, grapple with in the coming years.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
They know that. You don't have to, you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. So they already know. Thank you. It's a school night, like, when the kids smart. Thanks. Oh, thank you.
So next on my list of my report is the, I did want to share with the committee the Marine Corps Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps MOU or MOA that they asked me to sign. I thought it was important, even though it requires a superintendent's signature to bring to the committee, there's been a lot of discussion over the last few years. And before there is a signature, I did want to put it out there publicly to the committee to see if, what feedback they had or questions that they have regarding the MOA. There isn't a vote on it, but I certainly, you know, want to make sure, given that there, that this is a relationship that's been, you know, longstanding. There hasn't been a, an MOA since 2000 and, well, Steve Russell was the superintendent, so it's since 2012, is that right? Is that what it says here? And so wanted to see what kind of questions the committee had regarding what was submitted to me. Sorry, 2013 was the previously signed MOA. So I'll send it back to you, Mayor, to see if there's comments, questions, and what the committee's feeling about how we should, how I should proceed moving forward.
Member Manning?
I would, just looking at it and the multiple pages of detail that are here, I would really like some time to look at it. And I would perhaps suggest that we move it to policy to look more closely at it there. Or, I mean, that's what I would think would be the most, you know, we were familiar with it in the past. We've dealt with some of the issues at policy. So I think it would make sense maybe to go back to that and take it up on our next meeting. Is there a date that you need this back by?
There wasn't a specific date. There was just a request to sign, and if I had questions, to come back to the officers.
Well, maybe we can see if we have any questions as a committee and then, you know...
Share those out back.
Share those back. And then you could take them back.
I'm sorry, so are you suggesting that the policies committee take a look at it?
Yeah.
So I just have a question about that. Is it, is that typical, that the policies committee would look at an MOU? I don't want to set a precedent for something that doesn't happen. I don't know.
So what, I think what we've done in the past is we've taken a look at some programmatic pieces where there's a policy document that might be signed. So even if it's a district protocol, we've examined it at the request of the superintendent. So we could absolutely refer to policy to take kind of a deep dive and provide that guidance. But it doesn't necessarily mean that, like, the recommendation out of policy would be like, "We need a policy on MOUs regarding the JRTC program." That's baked into state law, I believe. So, you know, in this particular case, I think it's us just doing a review and consultation for the superintendent and a deeper dive with a smaller group and being able to come back with that feedback to the rest of the committee.
I mean, if I could, that's how I was looking at it, like, a smaller group, take a more, you know, detailed look and just come back.
But members could, what we've done in the past is, other members that have an interest in the, in the subject and have taken a look, they can send any of their thoughts to the policy subcommittee about, like, if there's a particular section you want us to look deeper into, engage with counsel on or anything like that.
Yeah, because that has happened.
That's, that's what's happened. So that's the process.
So I don't know if we need a motion to do to...
I think we're still under discussion here. Before you do a motion, Member Miranda?
Yes, I just wanted to just ask this point of clarification. I did read through that MOU. But in terms of reimbursements, it looks like it was stated that we are reimbursed as a district for 50% of the salary of the instructor from the Marine Corps. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then the second question, or, yeah, question that I have here is, it says in the MOU that there's a requirement for the minimum amount of students or else we're on probation from the paperwork that I looked at. And maybe I'm misunderstanding it, but it looks like we have 30 qualified students out of 927 students of the host school, which is Salem High. So I just wanted to ask if we're on probation or if we have been on probation.
Based on this document, we should be on probation. I don't know what the current numbers are, but they, according to this, it was 10, it's 10% of the student population, which would be 90 or so students. I don't believe they have that many, so that's a good follow-up question to ask them. Because our numbers have hovered in, like, the 50s and 60s, I think.
Yeah, we have been on probation, I know.
Yeah, I would assume...
Quite a while.
My assumption is that based on this document, that we would be on probation.
I would just ask if it's possible, if we can have some data or if it's, if it's going to the policy subcommittee. I would just be interested in seeing some data around enrollment for that program. And as we talk about budgetary constraints going forward, like, maybe this is something that we need to think about as a body, and that's all.
Thanks. So the city council will often co-post a subcommittee or committee meeting as a committee of the whole as well, so that members who are not on the committee could attend.
And participate.
And participate in the discussion. So I would suggest that if we do a policy subcommittee, it's co-posted as a committee of the whole meeting as well. So members who aren't part of the subcommittee don't have to deliberate by email or send questions by email. They might be able to just go coordinate it. And then invite the ROTC team to be present for that meeting for the questions. Are there any other questions for Dr. Zarek on that?
If Member Manning's not planning on doing it, move to refer this item to the policy subcommittee.
Yeah, actually, I was going to ask one more request. If we were going to look at the enrollment data, if there's any way to look at the data of the graduating class, how many of those students went on to enlist?
Yep.
I think would be an interesting question.
Sorry to have to ask another question. I guess going off of that, could we also get a little bit of feedback from students that have been involved to learn a little bit more about...
Current or graduates?
Either one. I guess graduates, since it's the beginning of the year. And maybe not educators, that might be asking a little bit too much, though I would be curious to hear their feedback.
There's a motion. Ask the motion be to refer to the policy subcommittee, co-post the meeting with the committee of the whole.
I'll second that motion.
Oh, go ahead. All right. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, Member Hoffman?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Manning?
Yes.
Member Cruz?
Yes.
Member Miranda?
Yes.
Member Cornell?
Yes.
And myself, Dominic, yes. And just encourage members, if you have questions, to send them to Dr. Zarek. MSBA?
Yeah, MSBA, do you want to, or Beth Anne?
Actually, I think it, Member Cornell. The designer selection process continues, the designer being the architects, because I know we talked about that last time. On September 5th, we have a designer selection subcommittee that is full of, you know, representatives from the community, many of whom are architects. Zee is on there, a few other people, I don't know if Anna's on there. Yeah, the city finance director's on there. And so on the 5th... And so on the 5th, they reviewed eight different designer proposals. On September 24th, we're going to have an applications review with the MSBA, and that will be myself, the mayor's designee, Anna Friedman, and Lisa Golden, who is the superintendent's designee. And from that, we'll determine a shortlist of three to four firms for interviews, and in that, we'll determine the questions for the interviews. And then on October 8th, the interviews for the designer will be held. And then beyond that, we have a meeting this coming Thursday, and that's always televised on Salem Public Access Television.
The one thing I might add is that, and the designer, I believe, is a case that actually the MSBA selects the designer, which is different than the project manager, is that while we narrow it down, our team narrows it down, ultimately, the selection comes from the MSBA, not from the Salem Public Schools. We make a recommendation of our finalists, but the selection comes from them.
Do they indicate a number of finalists they want?
I think it's three.
It has to be three, or no more than three?
I think the number is three. I think. I think that's right.
Sounds right.
You don't think that's right?
As I said, sounds right. Yeah, sounds right.
Any further questions or updates on MSBA? Any other finance or, like, still your report, I guess, but?
I have one update in operations, which is, progress continues on the Witchcraft Playground. The rubber surface is called poured-in-place, and it is almost complete. They poured it today, so we're at about 80% complete with the surfacing. It needs to sit for a minimum of three days with nothing on it, so it still is not available for use, but we are anticipating a ribbon cutting in early October. Remaining tasks are putting up the two basketball hoops that arrived on Friday, which will be done as soon as the surface is able to be stood upon. And we've got some plantings that need to be done, and we are waiting on a radial bench, which will be beautiful, and will be arriving in the first couple of days in October. So there will be a ribbon cutting, and we'll make sure all of you have the date.
Member Cruz?
Can I just ask about the basketball hoops? Do you know if those are adjustable, or is it just the installation?
Are you looking to dunk, Mr. Cruz?
No, but I'm thinking about the things that you can do with an adjustable.
I'm sure Zee knows, I do not remember, so I'll follow up with you on that.
Start with the right size, who? Mr. Cruz.
All right, refer to subcommittee.
Thanks. I'll wait to hear from Zee. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is it breakaway, chain, rope, what, you know?
Yeah, thank you, all the right questions. Some folks know, some folks don't.
All right, no further update? Is there anything else in your report, or are you done?
My report is concluded.
Thank you. Yeah, we have no student representative's report, subcommittee, yep, Member Cruz?
We do have a student representative report. So today, I joined Superintendent Zric to visit Salem High School, to meet with prospective members of the Student Advisory Council. We're in the recruitment phase, I think, as we had mentioned at the last meeting. And so we met with approximately, I think about 16 students, and there were at least two from New Liberty and Salem Prep, which was fantastic to have that representation. But the students essentially met, this is a core group that the superintendent had been meeting with, that he often refers to when he's here at committee, that our previous student representative was a part of. But essentially, you know, where the students are at is that they're in the process of setting up their elections for the different officer positions, to be able to then select a chair and a vice chair. So they have just asked me to set, to share a timeline of when we can expect them to complete their elections. So by Monday, October 7th, they would like to complete the elections and prioritize, you know, getting us the information for the chair and the vice chair. They want to play around with the minimum number of officers that they have to have is five, but they've talked about having officer positions that might be more specific to New Liberty and Salem Prep. And then additionally, they asked to report out just some numbers about the student interest following the presentation that the superintendent and I did, which is, which just gave context on what a student representative is, what's the role of the Student Advisory Council as defined by state law, and then what's the history of this function within the district. So I talked about all the efforts of this committee in the district to really resurrect the advisory council and having a student representative on the committee. And I think that that really got students excited, because we have five students that expressed an interest in serving as chair, five that expressed an interest in serving as vice chair. So it sounds like they're going to have competitive elections. The students did ask how they're supposed to decide, I did let them know, that is their choice. So whether they decide to vote by simple majority, through nominations, have ranked choice voting, I wasn't in the room when they engaged in those deliberations, but I'm sure the first student representative report that we do end up getting will be one of telling us how they came to the conclusion of who should be the student representative. The one thing that they also, the last thing they wanted me to share was that, once the two officers for chair and vice chair are decided, that they want to develop a plan to both recruit and expand membership for the full student advisory group, and select any additional remaining officers, and that they are planning on doing two-minute presentations per candidate to the rest of the group, and that's how they're going to determine each of the nominated officers. So it sounds like they'll get a real exercise in civics and being able to make the pitch. And they fully understand that the person that sits here with us is a member of this committee, although they do not vote, and I hope to change that in state law someday, but that's a conversation for another day. They are really excited about maybe being the first student advisory council that meets with the committee. I hope that I've planted that seed well on a monthly and a regular basis. So that's my update.
Thank you very much. Subcommittee reports. Yeah, Member Miranda?
So this is for the Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee. We met last week, I think it was. And I'll just briefly go over a couple of things that we spoke about. So at our, at our next meeting, October 7th, at 5:30 PM, we will have Zee, the Director of Buildings and Grounds, present to our subcommittee recommended increases in the facility rental fees and custodial fees for folks in the community that are looking to rent, excuse me, space at our schools or fields. Second, we spoke about Halloween parking, like a fundraiser at Collins Middle School, and there was a question about whether we were going to have this. And ultimately, we determined that because of different extracurriculars on evenings and weekends, that we would not promote a fundraiser for Halloween parking at Collins. And lastly, we received an update on summer projects. We heard about all the work that was done over the summer, and I think the committee would just like to extend their appreciation for all the hard work from leaders and custodians that went into the buildings this summer for our scholars and educators.
And grounds. Buildings and grounds?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. Member Cruz? Did you?
Just a subcommittee report.
Oh.
Just wanted to notify members of the committee and the public that we did have an executive session, as we stated at the last school committee meeting today, to just go over some details related to our contract negotiations with the Salem Teachers Union by way of just providing an update to members of the public, because I think I had talked about us potentially taking a vote at this meeting. I just wanted to note, from a process standpoint, we are still doing some housekeeping with our partners at the Salem Teachers Union to finalize a contract. So the first step in the process, again, still remains, and we're going to give space for that to continue to progress. And then we'll have a ratification that will take place, that the Salem Teachers Union will do on their end. And then as soon as we receive notice of ratification from the Salem Teachers Union, we will then proceed with putting that on the agenda for either a regular school committee meeting, hopefully at the end of this month, or in a special session at the end of the month if the timelines don't end up working out. So just wanted to share that quick update with members of the public. And at that particular meeting, that's when we'll do an update on the finalized contract for folks.
Any motions and resolutions? None? Announcements? I'll share, Mayor's Night Out is coming up, September 27th. Usually it's in October, this year, we've moved it into the, to the final Friday, so 5:30 PM for all the families that would like to join us at the East India Square Fountain for trick-or-treating with the mayor through downtown Salem. It's always a blast, so please come and enjoy my costume this year, which I will not divulge what it will be yet. And then tomorrow, we will be having a press conference with Bus Patrol and AAA New England to talk about safe travel on the roadways now that school's back in session. We do have the cameras on the bus stop arms, and want to remind people that we have kids walking and getting on and off of school buses, so please drive carefully. We received a harrowing report from a witness who almost saw a child who would have almost certainly been killed on North Street if it weren't for the, the flex posts slowing the car down that was making the turn as the child was in the crosswalk. So please go slow, please look twice.
Thank you.
Any other announcements from members? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
So moved under discussion, seeing none. Roll call vote. Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Manning?
Yes.
Member Cruz?
Yes.
Member Miranda?
Yes.
Member Cornell?
Yes.
Member Hoffman?
Yes.
Myself, yes, we are adjourned.